Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the City Commission Study Session Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the study session. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. This evening's study session has five topics. The first topic is Main Street Annual Review 2019, so I'll ask Ms. Wendy Scheit to come up and talk to the Commission. How are you doing, Wendy?
Good. How are you?
I think we're doing pretty good.
First nurse staff.
Yeah, we've got three of us here tonight. I have a quorum, but...
Well, you all got this in your pocket, so I, you know, won't belabor it.
Okay.
It's been a busy year for Main Street. We feel like we're always productive. There's always something going on. We consistently follow the National Main Street and the National Trust program of the four-step approach to downtown revitalization. We know it's proven. We know it works, and it shows in the First City because it's exciting here. It's full of businesses and merchants, and it is a destination. Revitalization is ongoing. We know that. Businesses are fluid. There's retirement. There's ones that just can't make it. There's ones that are following a dream that they really didn't plan for. There's others that are following a dream that they did plan for, and it's working well. But Main Street, we stay engaged and connected with all of them. So I had 56 new business and small business entrepreneurial contacts in 2019. We had 18 businesses that secured locations. I follow up with all the other ones and the new ones on a consistent basis. I provided you an available properties listing. We... It's a really valuable tool. It's not real detailed. It's not a database or anything, but I use this all the time. I send it out a lot, several weekly. If someone comes in, we work through it because they're looking for a location. Some existing businesses may be wanting to buy a building. You know, we stay connected with that, so that's very important. I also provided you this categorized listing of all the businesses that are downtown. I use that as well because entrepreneurs are coming in, and they may mention what they want to do, or they may not. I say, "Well, do you have a good business plan? Have you really done your research on what your competition or your non-competition is?" And so this is helpful. It's categorized. They can kind of take a look and see what we have downtown. And then we frequently, often as necessary, publish our business guide, and this is a shopping and dining guide. Both of them have our 2020 schedule of events on the back. The merchants receive these. We print ever how many they want. CBB takes these and puts them out. The hotels have these, and so these are really helpful as well to let folks know that there is a lot of business and a lot of things happening downtown. We are a resource network and try and work with everyone. Any questions on that slide?
No, that's good.
We've had some really exciting businesses open up this year that we've been fortunate to work with. Renee at Karma Cakes had talked to me early on about wanting to expand, and we went over that available properties list and really worked hard with them. I was really pleased when they decided on the large space at Fifth and Cherokee. That was an underutilized building. A couple long-term tenants and all the other ones were kind of come and go, and the building was really needing repair. Every time I was walking and looking up and thinking, "Whoops, something's going to fall off that building." So they made a huge investment in that, a local bank as well. So we're... This was, that I know of, her third expansion. We helped her when she moved downtown from out on Fourth Street. And so she has really stepped up. Back when the Corner Farm... The Corner Grill went out of business, she stepped up with lunches, and she's expanded that. You can pick up things. She's open till 5:00, sometimes 6:00. So we're excited. You know, me, I'm a preservation person, and I love to be able to walk through that building before they've done any work. And we could peek through and those drop ceilings and see that gorgeous tin ceiling, and the upper story offers a lot of, really, a lot of interest and excitement. So I know that as soon as the weather breaks, they'll be painting the outside, and hopefully when finances free up, build up, they'll be working on that upstairs. And another neat part of that whole building, when she purchased that building, she knew she needed four storefronts all in a row. So Fifth Avenue Frames, Crystal needed to leave. And so she was thinking, "Well, I just might as well retire. You know, I go to Maine in the summer," and blah, blah, blah. But we worked with a local business that had an available space that had not been renovated within their building, and so that worked out really well. She was able to...
That's good.
We provided some high school students to help her get all of her framing stuff out, store it. She went to Maine. She came back, and her space was all renovated, and it's inside Reunions Antiques, which is a really nice complement.
That is.
And so if you're downtown, go in Reunions, take a look at her space. And so that was retaining a business downtown.
Good.
Down in the 600 block of Cherokee, across from Hay Market, there was a couple double buildings that had been underutilized. The restaurant that was in 604 had been, I don't know, since I've been here, five or six different restaurants. So Reproctor purchased those buildings and is putting her Thai noodle shop. She has done a beautiful renovation from floor joists that needed to be replaced. The back wall fell, had to rebuild that. She's expanded the kitchen. It will be state-of-the-art, and so that is really exciting, to see that happening there. And then the First City Cheese Market is a tenant of hers. They don't own the building at 610 Cherokee, but that was the location they wanted. We worked with Hannah from the... Her inception of her idea and reviewed her business plan, gave her all the funding opportunities, and she went to the expense of renovating that storefront with her personal money, and it's gorgeous. Hopefully, everybody's been in there. A great addition to downtown. And so I think Pat Proctor plans on opening something like a classic car showroom in the building that has the overhead door at some point in time.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. So that'll be a fun addition downtown as well.
On that block, or is it...
Yeah. It's all part of these four, this two double buildings.
Garage right now, right? Garage store, yeah.
Yeah.
There are four apartments that were above the restaurant space, and she has upgraded those, and they, I hear, they're just beautiful. So we have more upper story. She's looking to renovate the space above the First City Cheese Market at some point in time.
Okay.
Burr Roaster was another business that came in, and it really complements downtown. He roasts coffee beans and puts together different blends. Some of our local businesses use his blends. You can buy it as beans or already ground. This is a great new business. He's open in the mornings, early, and I believe has some breakfast items. He closes a little bit in the afternoon. He's still a government...
Employee. Is he governor or military?
He's fully retired from the military. He may be getting ready to retire, but they're open late in the evening, so from 4:00 to, I believe, 9:00 or 10:00, it's open down there. And so after the performances at the Hollywood Theater, whatever, that's...
That's nice.
Yep, and it's just down from City Hall. So then, 211 South Fifth, this is one of the suites in Karma's building. It had been vacant, and out at Spruce and Broadway, that building that Lee Goodman's owned, had a fire, and the golf shop was there. And so he talked to us and thought he wanted to move downtown, so we worked with him, Justin, and he relocated downtown. I said... Gave him Karma's contact information. I said, "I think that would be a great location. Needed a little bit of upgrades," and so he's down there. So he filled that space, and then there's an existing salon in her other space. The Retrocade Arcade, we talked to him long ago when he decided to move from Flat City, and, you know, been several places he looked at. He settled at 318 Delaware, felt he needed more space, moved to the Masonic Building and that double building. Other than I wish his business hours were... He was open more. It's a fun experience business. I take my grandkids. They love it. I think adults love it as well. But anyway, hopefully, because he works as well, business hours are important. So that's exciting that we have that new business. So as Renee was leaving with Karma Cakes, we met with Glenn, that opened Rosalyn's First City Bakery.
That's a good place.
Yeah, and so, you know...
I love it.
That was a nice transition so that that location didn't stay vacant, and we actually encouraged him to open before Thanksgiving. He was going to open in December. No, you need to be open by Thanksgiving. And so he geared up and got that done, and he's open on Sunday and says he has amazing business.
Really? I didn't even know that. Mike the best cannolis in town.
Very good cannoli.
Oh, I've had him, yes.
Great swears by him.
He's expanded and has some better tables in there. He does lunches and food, and you can order trays of some delicious pastas from him. So, you know, I think he'll continue to grow there. 516 Delaware, and we knew that 505... She was located at 505 Cherokee, and that building has a contract on it, and the tenant was going to have to relocate. And so we talked to John Swalowski, that's a Main Streeter and owned where the State Farm Agency was on Delaware in the 500 block. So we hooked those two up, and it wasn't any time that Charity had moved her Fishburne Realty into that building and looks at buying that building. So that was another one that... State Farm was kind of wishy-washy if they were going to stay, if they were going to bring another agent here, and decided they weren't. And so, anyway, that was another thing we helped facilitate. Merry Weathers has been here several years, does a really great business, and they have been in a building that has been under-maintained many leaks, gone through a lot of things that they paid for the expenses themselves. A building owner, that wasn't a great asset for downtown, and so now they finally purchased the building through a couple other avenues that transpired, but we worked with all of those resources. And so there's some exciting things going to happen there.
That's right.
You know, a great corner, and they love where they're at. So that, you know, you guys know the concern we have of the 600 Cherokee building with the sign that still says Club Venom. It's just, I've had so many interactions with that owner this year. I've driven to Lawrence, togged an oxy to pick up keys. He is just not willing to... He tells me 200,000 net. I don't even know if it's a sellable building, but we've met with Paul, and there's buyers for it. So hopefully, you know, working all of us partners together, we can make something happen there. I believe the building is sound. It needs some significant renovations that are costly, but it's a great corner. It has parking. It has additional suites to lease. It has upper story, and so, you know, we'll...
Is the roof leaking? Do we know?
It leaks a little bit, but it needs... It needs a roof. It probably needs HVAC and electrical and plumbing.
It's a big expense.
But there's so much potential there.
Sure.
And so, anyway, we'll keep plugging away with that, and any type of marketing that, you know, we could all put together would certainly be good. The Lee's Furniture Building, known as the Edinson's Building, it's, you know, I think really gives downtown definition, and it adds character. It's unfortunate that some of the beams and flooring have been removed from the building. I would hope that that can't happen in other buildings. I don't know how to stop that. But, anyway, I know the owner has commented that somebody that can utilize the opportunity zone should purchase it. I've referred him to Taylor, and Ken Bateman is part of Main Street that's very knowledgeable on that, so I don't know...
These two properties have been problematic, basically, right? I mean, for many years. I know that...
Well, Club Venom forever. For the 14 years I've been here, there has not been anything in it. Now, the Lee's Building, I worked with...
Sure.
And I guess the owner for the Lee's Building just decided not to do anything with it, after all?
He's probably just waiting for a developer to come in. I've sent him numerous small business owners with some pretty good plans. Some of them were athletic-type activities that could go in it, but he generally tells me the utilities would just eat a small business owner up. And so there's a lot of things that could be looked at for that. I think it could be mixed-use in mind with...
Divided, yeah.
You know, I've been told there's community folks that would like to be able to purchase a condominium, so they don't want to own a building, but they want to purchase their space in an upper story. So those are, you know, you purchase your condominium. We don't have any of those, and I've talked to John about that. But, anyway, I think...
I think it would be a great candidate for one of these rock-climbing businesses. And there are some... There are some of those that have, like, they have franchises, and there are national chains, but... And maybe this has been looked into, but, I mean, in terms of the size and the height of the building...
And that's a couple of the businesses I've talked to, but they're more on the small business side.
Yeah, small business would be tough, but...
One of them has a full-time position, so you have to look at that, too, because it really needs to be a dedicated, well-run, very marketed type of business like that to stay in business. So we'll continue on that, but maybe we can work on some kind of marketing plan. This is just our budget and where our... How we operate our organization. We always provide you with a pro forma budget when you're working on your budget. Obviously, that's generally higher because that's kind of a guess for us. It was about 182,300. We adjusted that down to 136,600 because we had... Our major fundraiser was very good, but it didn't come into what our projections were in our budget. We did not do our playing cards this year because we just had a volunteer that was overworked and didn't have enough time, and our barbecue didn't happen. And so when we look at those, you know, that's the reason it goes down. It doesn't mean that we're doing any less of a job or we're doing less marketing. It's just that some of those projections didn't come in. And so, you know, 339% return on your investment, I think, is excellent, plus the number of volunteer hours are just tremendous that our volunteers provide. Well, do you have any questions on that one?
I like the way you laid that out, pretty simple and straightforward.
We have financial business, and I failed to put nonprofit and friend investors in that dues category, so that's where dues come from, and we're a 501(c)(3). Sentient Without Walls, we've had this long before I came, but we didn't have a whole lot of money to loan. When we had Kansas Main Street in the beginning, as we had projects, we would apply for money for loans, and then that would be kept in our local account as a revolving fund. So I built that up, and it's at about 52,800. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that continues to revolve, and we've had, what's that say? A number of loans over the...
Over the course of having this.
Yep, over the course, and, you know, it amounts to 350,000-plus in downtown reinvestment. So we keep that loaned out. It's a no-interest loan. The board approves it now, and now that we have Kansas Main Street, we've asked if there'll be more money that we can apply for, and so we'll try and do that. But we generally do it for anything that's going to stay with the building, usually not product.
Okay. That's good. I think it is important that now you can at least ask Kansas Main Street, which has been reestablished.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
And Kansas Main Street doesn't provide any monetary resources for us. They provide training and other contacts, but this money, I believe, comes from the lottery where they got it in the beginning. Anyway, we signed a memo of agreement now with Kansas Main Street annually to retain that and report our figures. And I... Payments are due monthly. I don't do any three-month, six-month payments from businesses. It's a monthly loan payment.
Okay.
Well, let's see. You know, we do a lot of things that, you know, really aren't particularly for the merchants. I think it helps because the Banner of Honor program brings folks down. It's military-related. We have a waiting list for that because we only have 52 locations, and it's an annual program. The pole banner program is not where the Banner of Honor banners are. It's in the other part of downtown.
Right.
Those are the ones that have a business name attached to them. The American flags on Delaware that we put up and take down are funded by us. We do a really nice Veterans Day VIP reception after the parade, and you've all seen our mural on our building. We're in the process of printing the Shawnee Art Walk brochures that... Because Shawnee Street really had the most amount of public art already on it, believe it or not. So we've done a nice brochure that I will get to you as soon as that's done, and so we will expand that and add to it as more public art is put on Delaware and Chalk Town various locations. But there's some really interesting and exciting things going to happen, and I know Nancy's been involved in those talks in 2020, so...
Is the mural on your... On the side of your building, is that still have more to go?
The whole one-story building, when it warms up, she'll be working on that, so it goes all the way to the alley.
Wow.
And she was out there on Friday and Saturday, and I believe so...
And it looks wonderful.
Yeah, and even Monday morning, she was working, as long as the weather permits.
It's eye-catching. No question about that.
Let's see. We have our two board members that are appointed by the city, and they're active, and we're really glad to see the wayfinding signs finally done that we initiated. You all picked up and got them installed.
Yeah, those are very nice.
And I think that'll really be beneficial to folks as they're zipping down Fourth Street, Seventh Street or Broadway, that they realize that there are those type of things in between. We feel like the majority of our activities do have a great economic impact to the city, the county, the state. And so as we are doing events, promotional events, they're either downtown awareness that we actually have a downtown when we're bringing people in. It could be directly related to merchants' businesses. It could be cash register ringing events for those merchants, because that's important, or it could just be destination experience-type things. So most all of these events add to the economic impact. When we do the loft tour, it's always well-received, and we either recruit some folks to live downtown. We've had people buy a building based on our loft tour, and so, anyway, that's...
In terms of the upper-story lofts, has that been a trend over the last several years that more people are, you know, buying or renting those lofts and living there? Has that been a... Is that something that's increased or has stayed pretty much the same?
Well, I think it's increasing, obviously. You know, we've got stove lofts, and I've got the ones at the Blue Bridge and...
I was talking within, like, the 28-block portion of, yeah.
Well, it's increasing. It's, you know, we certainly watch the codes and look at all that because it's expensive to renovate upper story. It's important, though, because it provides mixed-use development. Mixed-use development provides more people living downtown to eat, shop, play, do all those things. So we've got about nine building owners that are looking at upper-story development, and some of these locations have not been updated for many years. So we think that'll be a good thing. There may be more of a parking issue. Parking issues are good things. It may move the city to look at a multi-level parking garage or garages, but we are really fortunate that we have a large downtown, and it's full service. So, yes, to answer your question...
Yeah, okay.
I think it has increased with the upper-story development.
In recent years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
These are just pretty much the events that we do annually. Other than our annual banquet, everything is geared towards small business downtown development.
Did the downtown, do you think, have a pretty good holiday season, or is...
They had a good holiday season from the merchants I've talked to, just because the way the calendar felt. Everybody was a week short.
Right.
And so that really hurts, but...
Made the most of the time that they had.
Well, they did, and our Shop Small Saturday, that Saturday after Black Friday, was just a little down, maybe by $500 from what it was the previous year, but that's about $75,000 in sales, just at those 22, 24 participating purchases.
Small Business Saturday. Yeah, I was out, and it was busy.
Yeah, and so Main Street was 10 bundles of 100 Main Street bucks to 10 folks for spending $25. So they get those tickets. We actually count those tickets, and it's exciting to see those because they recirculate in the community, and we continue to repay those. And so, you know, when you consider the many restaurants that are downtown that don't participate, because it's kind of a hassle to give people tickets when they eat a meal and the other businesses that are open, you know, we know there's probably a quarter of a million done just on that Small Business Saturday, which led us to do the Shop Smalls, the Christmas in July event, which is a similar event. They just... Their tickets are $20 that they get a ticket for. They're sending receipts. We talked about upper-story development. Any questions on that?
Is there anything else? I mean, you have to work with the city, you know, on the code things, and, I mean, we've heard that with some of the update to the building codes and things like that, but you think good relationship between the city and the people who are trying to do this?
I think so, and I think we'll probably, you know, reach out and work more closely with codes and police and fire and to hopefully make that happen. But like I said, I've got nine building owners looking at that right now, and so those are major investments that they're going to make downtown. Many of the... Many of the opportunities network, Kansas doesn't fund residential, and so that opportunity doesn't exist for that. So, you know, we proposed a couple of things that maybe could help that initial large development, and we'll continue to talk to the city about that.
Okay.
Our social media is very active. Part of the advantage of being a Main Street investor is because we really promote on social media and other avenues. There are many posts that what they're doing, and so we...
So you have a website, Facebook, Instagram, or anything?
We have Twitter.
Okay.
Not very active on Instagram, and we do, you know, quite a bit of co-op advertising, and pass those savings along so that... That's print, or TV, or radio.
Okay.
So that we are investing in those opportunities and offering that to the business owners as well. And I think that's it. We greatly appreciate your time, your investment in the organization, the hotels. You know, we work closely with Hampton and the Home Two Suites, and so Carolyn at Home Two Suites, hopefully you know, she was one of 25 Hiltons that was honored for top Hiltons in the country. She's offered her conference in Anaheim now. I haven't heard anything. I really would hope that she... She might be awarded one of the top performers, but she's really active with downtown and the community.
And she's one of your committee heads, right?
Uh-huh. She's the design committee chair and on the board.
Right. Can I ask just two questions about, just very quickly? I saw on Facebook that the Pot Rack, Ollie and Catherine West are going to be retiring, maybe not immediately, but... So it'd be really nice if somebody came in and was able to carry out with their business. She mentioned that in her post, but what do you think?
Well, they talked about it a couple of years ago and kind of changed their mind. You know, I get it because I think Ollie's a little older than Catherine, and, you know, there's only a window of opportunity. Nobody's beat that final alternative, so, you know, we will... As I told both of them, we will do everything in our power to try and help them find someone to buy the business. They're going to retain the buildings, and those will be leased to whoever, hopefully someone that wants to purchase that business. They really built it up well. They've... It's just a tremendous business, so...
Good.
You know, we'll hope. Same thing with the Uniform Connection. It wasn't quite the same type of business, but, you know, I talked to her and gave her some resources and encouraged her to sell that business as we did for the party... as we did for the party store, and they did sell that business. So, we are working now on another business that she would like to retire. Husband's been ill and we have a buyer for it. She just has to sell her house in another state and that is ready to go. But, you know, it's sometimes contingent on things. So, anyway, we'll hope that.
And I had one other question, because it was in the same most. Somebody else mentioned it in terms of a comment, the bakery delicatessen, are they, are they closing or?
They closed on Saturday. I was in there on Saturday and we knew that they were transitioning. I believe there's a new bakery going in there, not the Czech Bakery, but another type of bakery. And so, you know, we always hate to lose that. It was delicious.
I know, we're wonderful.
Okay, I just wonder. That's, saw that in the comment and I appreciate the update on that.
Yeah, so we try and, you know, we, it's great that Luigi's transitioned. And we helped Andy in that transition. And, you know, that's just really growing well. She's local and I think that makes a difference.
It does.
And the only thing I forgot to mention was this funding opportunities that a sheet I gave you. That's another value of a resource that we maintain. And I hand out or email to businesses and entrepreneurs so that they know how to contact the different entities that have some type of funding opportunity. And certainly, I sit on the Grow and Work County Board and in the Treasurer, but Taylor's the expert in the city and Tim Bossy's the expert in Lansing and the county. So, you know, it's a great program as well. So, we just try and do everything we can to help them be prepared to be in business for the long haul and to grow and be successful. That's what everybody wants, so.
Thank you.
Good report, thank you Wendy.
Good report Wendy.
Good update and best to Marley, I know, who, you know, works with you very closely and the members of your board.
Yeah, always do a good job Wendy.
She's passionate about, she couldn't come tonight, but she left Jen's Stitches, I'm sure, more so than me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the 2018 International Fire Code.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, our Fire Chief Gary Birch is gonna come up. The title of this item is a little bit of, a little misleading. We've already given consensus to move forward on the fire code. This is the administrative, the local administrative policy on open burning. So, the fire code itself has gone forward. So, we've talked about this a couple of times. This has to do with a recommendation from the Fire Chief. So, we've heard it a couple of times. I'll just have him go over it briefly and then having discussion the Commission would like to have on that.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello, Chief, how you doing?
Good. You know, like I said, we went over this a few times and hearing from some of the constituents and stuff. In fact, since we proposed this the last time, making the exception to go ahead and allow it burning, but have two windows, spring and fall, where they could actually burn, much like they're doing now, but just have those windows, we would still go out and do permitted. I did hear from a couple of residents that did like that, that we want to do that. So, so what we just proposed was, in fact, one gentleman that called me actually, you know, and there was nothing set in concrete last, last time we met. He even suggested, because I think I said like April or something, he suggested, well, you know, because of the weather, April fifteenth to May fifteenth, so I just wanted to change it to that. And then in the fall, September fifteenth to October fifteenth.
In fact, you heard from Dr. Gillette, right? Because he was here on the two previous occasions when we discussed this issue, so.
And he actually called me and he's one that suggested the dates, kind of changing the dates just a little bit. So, I didn't have a problem with that at all. I just, I was looking for like a spring-fall type of thing, kind of clean up. And anyway, so that's kind of what we're proposing, just to add that into the exceptions. Just open burning on those two, on that date, those occasions each year, twice a year, by permit.
And by the way, is that, would that permit be good for both of those windows? One in the spring and one in the fall? Or you have to get a permit each, two separate?
You'd have to get a permit each time, yes.
Okay, any cost for the permit?
No, we don't charge. We do go out and just make sure it has the right distance and.
And that's the brush and tree debris twice, twice per year?
Right.
I was wondering what my fellow commissioners thought about. I talked to Chief about maybe expanding on both of those windows by fifteen days. In other words, forty-five days in the fall, forty-five days in the spring, just to give a little more flexibility or a little more.
Especially depending on the weather, if there's drought or something, you know.
So, would you have a problem with that, Chief, if we?
So, would you go like April fifteenth to later in May?
Whatever the days are, forty-five days in each one of those windows.
And that's kind of an eternal thing that we, you know, we post on our website and stuff. And the Form 7, there'd be no problem doing that.
Because then that ends up being about three months, a quarter of the year that you can do that, that that is available to the residents, so. Any other questions about burn barrels or anything? That was a big.
I still would, I still would like to see that in here with a permit, but I think I'm probably the only commissioner that feels that way. So, I'll state that I would let it go, you know, for now. But I would prefer to have that in there, but obviously, that's not gonna happen, so let's move on.
I did, I did receive emails from both Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Price. Commissioner Price is in favor of it as is. Commissioner Wilson was in favor of adding a burn barrel to the exemption list, so I'll just let you know that.
All right.
I just think, and we've been able to study the whole thing about burn barrels. I mean, that smoke, because it like, it, the fire going is at a pretty low rate and it creates some toxic, toxic smoke. And you can probably.
Incomplete combustion, less.
It can cause some real health problems, I know. So, I'm comfortable with what the Chief has recommended. And except if you could do the forty, I think we have a consensus maybe going from thirty to forty-five days for each of those windows.
Push it like to May thirtieth, so what you're thinking, April?
Either that or on the front end, whatever.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
However, you want, however, whatever you think.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Whatever you think on forty-five days, I'm sure the.
All right, so, any other discussion or comments?
Nope.
So, do we have a consensus on moving forward with the process of adopting this policy with respect to the burn?
So, the consensus, it's an administrative policy, so it won't come back. We'll just get the consensus from you and then it'll be put in place by the Fire Department and be posted on the city's website and all of those places.
And it sounds like you have a consensus to go with the way it is right now.
With the forty-five days.
Yeah, with forty-five days, yeah. I'm sure the other two will be okay with that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald's coming up and this is the topic, Design Options for Second and Chestnut Stormwater Repairs.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is a large stormwater project generally in the area of Second and Chestnut. Consultants from Wilson have been hard at work on this. They're completed the study, reviewed with staff. They're closing in on completion of design. There's a couple, two areas that we wanted to get a little input from the Commission. Once we tie that up, we'll get that direction to Wilson and then Wilson will complete the design and then we'll go to design and then bid. I'm gonna have Mr. McDonald, Mr. Hooper, go through those two project areas in your packets. We did identify three options at each location and a staff recommendation for those areas. So, Mike, if you want to go through the project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is basically an update on the design, status of the design, the report that's been, has been prepared by Wilson and Company. The next step in this process is if we can resolve them before this evening, they will bring back the contract to do the final design, the project, which will take place in 2020 and we expect this project would be constructed in 2021. I've got, there was a handy handout of PowerPoint. This is really related, there's some overlap of material, but this is related to the system that we call Second and Chestnut. It is really about a hundred and twenty-six acres bordered between Second Street and Fourth Street and also from Chestnut to Spruce Street in a broad sense. And this is a system that is probably as old as Leavenworth. It has, it was one of the first things that had to be constructed in these neighborhoods for the streets. The storm drainage follows the creeks. And as the creeks, as the storm drainage was built and the streets were raised, the lots get pushed down. And ultimately, your storm drainage was built with late eighteen hundreds technology, covered with a lot of dirt. It's been on and off maintained over the years, but it is in dire need of major help. We hired Wilson to look at some options. We explored things because the system is so deep and it's so large. The portions of this have been fixed over the years. The part that's basically over here where it was at Dollar General is, was a part of a significant improvement that was done a number of years ago. And the city has done repairs at least twice in ten years where the potted water eroded the bank, it created unstable situation around the gas station on Second Street. The project concept that we worked with on Wilson, with Wilson to get to was essentially the rational choice is to replace the existing system, which varies from typically sixty to sixty-six inch stone pipe all the way up to seventy-two inch, although there is a section of forty-eight inch pipe that somebody put in, in one of the vacant lots over the years. It's all in a kind of marginal to worst condition. Essentially replacing the main system with seventy-two inch concrete pipe. That's about nine hundred and fifteen feet of pipe. And then you're connecting two or three subsystems into that with another thousand feet of pipe ranging from twenty-four inches up to forty-two inches. The seventy-two is only on the main system. There's a significant number of inlets and junction boxes. They tend to be really deep. Parts of this system are thirty feet deep. Most of it's probably twenty, but a lot of it is thirty feet deep. In addition to all of that, you have the, there's some pavement. We'll have roadways to restore, sidewalks to restore, and of course, but the surface restoration. This is a little different view of the same thing, with the north being to the upper right. This is Second Chestnut, basically shows this old system wandering through. This is the Pizza Hut at the corner from Fourth and Spruce. And identifying the system that'd be expanding to the south and to the north, essentially on the east side of the Justice Center, a lot of water that comes down there that floods at intersection at Second Chestnut. We can get the water in the system before it gets there, we'll reduce the problems.
That's a pretty large area.
It's an interesting, they did it kind of right, I guess you would say, when they built the residential. Its size, basically correct. We were not aware of a known history of residential flooding. Every time it rains, my basement floods type problems. So, we were pleased with that, but we ultimately decided there was nothing to be gained by trying to save parts of the existing system.
That was a good idea not to do that.
So, we end up kind of with two, two odd situations that I just want to bring to the Commission for a sense of direction. If we can kind of know where we're going with these two items, then they'll finalize their design contract and bring them back to us. Decisions that are made here cannot be considered as like the final decision. There's always going to be opportunity for discussion on a large project like this. But the recommendations of staff for these two locations are shown above. First is three hundred block of Olive, it's a vacant lot. I'll show some pictures on that in a second. What do we do with that? And then two hundred block of Chestnut, we're proposing to reroute the new system to avoid a real difficult situation with some existing buildings. This is the three hundred block of Olive Street, and I'll use the pointer here. This is Olive Street in the south side. The properties in here are owned, it's a deep hole, it's about twenty feet deep. It's owned by the city, I think the county owns in a joint piece of property there. And in nineteen sixty-six, we've shown the contours, basically shows the shape and size of the low area. And there was an extra house here that is not there anymore. This is the current layout. The size of the opening is much smaller, it's been filled in with who knows what over the years. And the staff recommendation is that that current channel would be constructed through with the pipe. And I'll go over here to this, we would construct a pipe through the low area of that. We would fill it up to match the yards on each side. It would be a bioswale in that water that's within the block that currently goes into that. It's not taking water off the street, but water that comes off the yards in that block would run through essentially a biological filter and then enter the stormwater system. We've done similar bioswales on Stubby Park Stormwater Repair Project and also the projects we did up off between Broadway and Seventh Street along Ottawa. And then some, there are other options, or you can just leave it a big open hole or you can do some other things that did make sense. It's not effective as a detention basin. And if you designed it to try to be one, it would fluctuate very quickly in the water. It would be twenty feet deep in a matter of a very short period. We didn't think that was appropriate for that neighborhood and that's our recommendation at that location. The second is the two hundred block of Chestnut. This is, if you look at the top picture, you can see there's a large apartment complex with the blue line representing existing pipe that was put in. I believe that was put in by the property owner in early seventies. It's undersized for the rest of the system and it's busy, failing in heavy rains. It's, you know, pictures in the.
Solid photos.
Reporter, they're fairly dramatic.
Pretty dramatic changes in the short period of time.
Right.
Which makes me wonder, can this wait till 2021? I mean, it's dropping off pretty fast.
Well, we move forward, of course, we're gonna be talking to properties. We're gonna need some level of these permission. But we felt it was in the best interest of the city to not undertake a project that starts out with, we want to replace the pipe under your building.
No, I don't think that's a good idea.
That's not a good place to start.
I like the idea of redirecting.
So, once again, it's a large, it's a large, sixties.
But you're the engineer, I don't know anything. It just sounds like a good idea to me.
It was, this was all filled in in the, after the sixties and our recommendation is to kind of avoid to the best that we can with the red line. That's not the final layout, that's kind of a conceptual layout. We'll work through the details and design and the process.
Sounds good.
There's other viable options that are outlined in the policy report. We can review those if you like, but that's, that's kind of where we are. Everything being equal, so we can complete the design of this, this year and construct it hopefully early a year from now.
Definitely in need for it.
Mike, why don't you introduce who's here?
Oh, excuse me, I've got two representatives from Wilson, Justin Klaas and Charles Lomond. Anybody want questions of them, it's one of y'all.
You guys want to send somebody up and just give us a little overview of what you've been doing?
Just, yeah, I was pretty impressed with your report. Just give us a quick, quick, brief overview, particularly the photographs were worth a thousand words, you know, in terms of. Yeah, because we had discussed this before, but I mean, the photographs really brought the importance of this project to, you know, our attention. You can't, you can't ignore that in terms of what's going on.
Absolutely. Mike outlined it, the pipe size for the main system changes from seventy-two inch on the most upstream side to right underneath the house, a forty-eight inch. And so, there's no known issues of flooding throughout the course of the system. But when we sized it for all the hydraulic calculations and everything, the seventy-two inch came out as the right size, primarily because all the roads along the entire way there are pretty flat and so there's no clear overflow path. So, if we were to undersize it, there's a potential that we could flood out properties around the area. So, that's why we had to size it for the hundred-year event in the end. Aside from that, we upsized the inlets along, or we're proposing to upsize the inlets in order to capture more water, because while there's no residential flooding, we were told that there's some local intersection flooding in some spots where inlets could be improved. So, we're looking at improving the general drainage of the area as well, so.
Sounds good, yeah.
I like the concept that you boiled down to those four or five bullet points. I thought that's good in support of these two design issues in terms of addressing them as you address them, Mr. McDonald. I do have a question, though, in terms of, in your policy report you had, how do these design issues fit into option one, option two, and option three? Do we need to make, are we making a decision tonight?
On an option, yeah, I was wondering.
Well, essentially, if you feel that the staff recommendation is the appropriate direction, that's all we need this evening. We will incorporate that into our design contract, so they won't have to consider, maybe we need to bring back six well-thought-out alternatives. We'll initially pursue this and see if we can make it work.
On these two design issues, is that what you're, okay.
Okay.
What about cost? I mean, do we have an estimate of, for this particular project and will it have to be bonded because of its cost?
Yeah, we've been meeting with bond counsel and that's one of the projects that we will put out for bonds this year. And we're going to, our plan right now is to pair this project with the Independence Court Stormwater Project to be our first stormwater bonded project because they will combined probably be in the two point six million dollar range, which is well over two years of our stormwater fee. So this will be the first one that we'll have to put out for bonds to be able to do a project of this magnitude all at once. And this is not something, and again, let the engineer speak to this, not something you can really do in small segments. You really need to do the whole system at once.
Right.
And which firm will do the, do we have to select a firm to do the design work?
Wilson will do this.
Okay. Sure, yeah. I just didn't recheck it, but okay. Any other question? Yeah, I think we've got a consensus here of yes, in terms of what you've identified as those design issues. I'm supportive of what the city engineer wants to do with respect to that. And the overall concept, anything? So was that, is that enough guidance to?
Yes, sir.
To get started?
That's what we need and we'll move forward, bring back a design contract as quickly as we can so we can get started.
That'd be good.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next is to consider parking lot repair locations for 2020.
Mr. Merritt, commission, the city commission has now completed three downtown parking lot repair projects. Couple of years ago, we decided to add to the pavement management program one downtown parking lot per year. The idea, not necessarily in all of them are reconstructions, some of them have just crumbling curbs, they need some tender loving care. We've done some large ones to start off, but that doesn't mean there aren't other parking lots that have smaller repairs to curbs, concrete panels, some islands, some tree work that needs to be done. Staff has, I think, selected ourselves the first three based on some stormwater issues and some significant issues. We wanted to bring, as we get ready to add these to the pavement management design contract, bring some options to the commission just to get a little bit of input. So we've presented four parking lots. That doesn't mean that there aren't many more in the downtown that need some work. That's why we started this program. This isn't a five-year program. It's a program that we probably will take twenty years to get to all of them. But it's a good start and again, if you look around, there's already three that have been redone and I think that looked very good. So I want to throw out one other item this year. This is the first year that we will be doing two million dollars worth of work on our city roads. We went from eight hundred and fifty thousand and the year we went to one point three million. We also started doing Twentieth Street. So that was, that was five years. So even though we're at one point three million, we were never really able to put those in the city at large. The commission increased that to two million. We have Twentieth Street done, so we have that. This money does come out of that pot. This comes, parking lot projects in the downtown come out of the two million dollars. So what we tried to do is give you a little bit of a cross-section of projects. We gave you a large one that has stormwater elements, that's more of a reconstruction project, well over two hundred thousand dollars. And we gave you some other ones that are important lots but that the repairs are less than a hundred thousand, that are still meaningful projects but could, you know, give us more bang for our buck in the road program. So I'm going to let Mike just kind of go through these again. This is, there could be eight on here but we had to pick four to make it manageable. So I'll let Mike go through those projects.
Mike Hooper and Mike Stephen put together the cost estimates and we've got some pictures. There were pictures in the policy report. I won't go through those, but these are probably more interesting pictures than those. The first lot that we identified was the City Hall lot on the east side, east side of the building. It's this picture looking north from Shawnee Street. You can, this being City Hall, you're looking down and north is at the top. It's basically this, this south half of that lot. There are some limited repairs that were proposed for the north half, but it was constructed, what, twenty years ago? We redid it, there's some bad curb and a broken panel somewhere in there. But the bulk of the repairs would address this lot, you see in the foreground here. The second one.
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
On the first one, the East City Hall parking lot, I mean, there are some significant stormwater challenges that would have to be dealt with, isn't it? Because I've heard that when it really rains hard, you know, a lot of, an intense rain in a short period of time, that, I mean, there is a lot of water that kind of runs down to Fourth Street and kind of, in some cases inundates the.
Does it bother, bother that lot?
This lot's a problem in itself. There aren't some, any stormwater systems within the boundaries of this lot or close to it. So it makes handling that stormwater a real challenge and it, the way it's designed now, stormwater actually runs down the alley to Fourth Street.
And it's a mess right there next to Fourth Street.
It is. It runs down here and the alley is actually slightly lower than Fourth Street, so there's always a pond of water right here.
Yeah, plus a big sink, big puddle.
And I think that is one factor in terms of contributing to the larger cost. I mean.
Right, what's the estimated cost on that?
Well, and one thing with all four of the lots we're looking at tonight, they're all constructed of concrete, which adds some additional costs, some additional challenges to repair those.
I think it's like two ninety-three.
Two ninety-three, you said it, okay.
Hundred ninety-three thousand for the cost that's outlined on the policy report.
I got it.
That's fine.
Sorry to interrupt you.
While we're here. The second lot that we identified is southeast corner of Second Street in Cherokee. This is what Joseph, to the community college, get up, do the aerial view here. Cherokee Street's running east-west at the top and this is Second Street. Ringer's High Noon was down here, down here. So this is kind of a lot that was used, heavily used by the students at the.
Right. The whole lot, right?
The whole lot. Since the community college isn't there anymore, it's getting a lot of use, I think, from other business and residents around there. This is, repairs are estimated at about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
The more you look, the more you can find to work on. You had a lot of like really crazy sidewalk here. These trees, I think, were planted in the initial streetscape project in eighty-eight or eighty-nine or somewhere in there. They've had, they've had a lot of time to get aggressive and push the sidewalk around.
Yeah, a lot of elderly people eat over there at Pullman's and park over there in that area. Makes it hard for walking.
This is northwest corner of Third and Delaware. You're kind of, the back of the photographer is to the movie theater. This would be Third Street and then the grassy strip.
Yeah, the movie theater's catty corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is, was the act complex. Here's aerial view looking north. The movie theater is over here in the lower right corner.
It's used quite a bit.
And the hotel parking lot is upper right corner.
And that's, I think, estimated about a hundred and seven thousand.
It's, gets a lot, surprisingly, a lot of use. The picture that's taken here doesn't show that, but movies, I think, it pretty much fills up.
Right, and you think of even with the, you know, down at Tampico and Luz and all that, you know, a lot of people park down that way.
In a strategic location.
Yeah, it doesn't look that bad when you look at this because the corners, the sidewalks, the street is taken care of, but the parking lot sure needs it.
The fourth one that we've identified here is a lot that is immediately east of Pullman.
Yeah, this is the one I was thinking of when you showed that other one.
We worked on the lot, look at the aerial photo here, once again, it's the top. This is the Pullman. This is the lot that we rebuilt two years ago, I believe.
Yeah, two, three years ago.
And we were able to incorporate some stormwater, water quality features into that nicely. We may not be able to duplicate that, but we're going to try to find a way to do that just because there's no close stormwater. I think it's expensive pretty quick. But it is relatively, comparatively, seventy-six thousand, something dollars for this. I think it improves this walkway that goes through here. You're seeing these businesses come into the south side of the landing shops.
Landing, yeah.
That's a good point.
And the trees are coming out too?
The trees, the trees would come out. Most of the problem with this lot is on the south side of the lot where the trees and everything are, the curb's in bad shape.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the panels have settled there, the entrance is not in good shape, the sidewalks in pretty rough shape.
So you'd have to tear the trees out?
All the trees would come out and we would plant a new, different.
They've got too big anyway.
Well, I mean, with the roots and everything and it's disturbing the sidewalk. Yeah, I mean, it happens.
And we planted new trees on the part that we did a year or two ago. There's a different picture of that lot.
Yeah, some concrete panel replacement and other parts of the lot.
I don't believe there was a full pavement with asphalt over the top of this in these estimates, is that right? This is just concrete repair. We can try to find a way, which we did down on Sixth and Cherokee, to maybe add an asphalt surface pavement to it, but that's not included in these estimates. They're basically repairing or replacing the concrete that's there.
Okay.
I mean, and that's partly your recommendation at this point. I mean, this, right. I mean, we'd be paying more money if we went with the additional asphalt, right? So.
I think this sounds good.
So, yeah, well, what do you, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners in terms of what you think. There's four good options, good lay down on the options. I will chime in, but I.
I mean, I like, I mean, just the top two in my mind is the northwest corner of Third Street and Delaware Street, which is the one you just showed. Or no, that was the one by the Youth Achievement Center.
Right, right.
And then the other one, they just showed the lot east of Pullman.
Yeah.
Especially the one, just the very last one, east of Pullman.
Yes.
That, I think that, to me, that is the most critical.
Yeah, and that gets used a lot even besides.
Especially the sidewalks. I mean, maybe not the parking lot as much as the sidewalks.
But if they have events down there too, that's good parking, that area, yeah. Those are my two, so, that I think.
It sounds like those are, if you had to rank your two top priorities, Commissioner Bowder would be the.
My top priority would be the lot east of Pullman, the last one.
And if you had a second priority, what would it be?
The third, second, second Cherokee. Second Cherokee. Those two, both of them on Cherokee.
Both of them on Cherokee.
Yeah, the two that you have on Cherokee there.
I'm kind of where Commissioner Leonhard is as far as, I think my first priority is the Third Street in Delaware, that northeast corner across from the new theater, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then my second priority would be that, that east of Pullman, the Second Street in Cherokee, the half of the lot that hasn't been done yet, which is, I think, seventy-six thousand dollars.
I think that'd be a good one to finish, finish up.
I think, right. I think that if I had to make a proposal, and do we need, do we get any input from?
So we do have one. Commissioner Wilson indicated support for the Youth Achievement Center, the one next, directly next to the Youth Achievement Center. He didn't rank all four, but he indicated that was, that was the one he was.
And the one by City Hall is, I mean, I know I park there all the time and I know the sidewalks are really heaving there in that middle thing there and that really, that really needs some work. And then when it's, I mean, right now, I don't know how the leaves, well, the leaves on the trees won't be there anymore, but now I've been parking in a big pile of leaves right here on the edge. And I've got them pretty well mashed down until the next ones come through. But they just kind of sit there and the same thing happens over there on that, the other street down on, behind Prestige Home Care, down behind the Heritage Center. They do that there too and they just kind of sit there until finally get somebody to come and clean them out and people fall and trip on them, so, anyway. They're all, they're all important, so I would just leave it to the discretion of the
I would.
Of the engineers.
What I'd like to, we're not voting on it or anything, but we're trying to give feedback. I think with the two million dollars in terms of our road budgets, if we could deal, if we could do two parking lots in, would it be design and construction in 2020, Mr. McDonald? Both? Design and construction?
Yes.
Would be the Third Street in Delaware, that's across from the movie theater, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then the other one is finishing up the one at Second Street in Cherokee, east of Pullman, which is seventy-six thousand, which comes out to about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, which is about nine percent of our overall two million dollar budget. Now, that's kind of what I.
Are we just considering two?
Oh, I thought it was just.
Well, I think, I think if we go, if we go more than, we can consider more.
To which lot?
I just think, it's just that it gets up there and it's going to take, it's going to chiple.
It's going to take away from the street.
From the roads, from the roads and the streets that we have to make decisions on later in the year.
It's up to the commission one, two. I mean, we've gone with one each year, but it, you know.
I, let's just do one each. Let's just do one this year. You guys pick one. I don't, I think the one by the Youth Achievement Center is probably not the worst one, but that's up to you guys. Yeah, we'll pick one.
Did we get?
Wilson.
Just, just, just the one from Commissioner Wilson. That's just what I have.
And you're good with that?
Yeah.
I, I can go along with that. I think that in terms of, I'd prefer going with two, just that at some point in one of these years, we're going to have to get to this City Hall East Parking Lot. And that's, I mean, that, once we, when we choose that, I don't know whether it'll be next year or the year after, I mean, that's a lot of money. And so I was just, go ahead.
Well, I think if we just choose one right now, because didn't we have, those engineers came in and we haven't really seen the reports yet of what the study is on the streets through the whole town to see.
Yeah, they have the STANTEX stuff now and they're working on it, right.
So, you know.
If there's a, if there's a clear two, what we could do is, and these numbers are generated by staff, these are staff estimates, these weren't done by a FNS, we're pretty good at estimating quantities. We could design two and come back with costs. It's not going to be that much more in the design contract to design two and we could maybe do one as an ad alternate if bids come in low on other stuff.
Right.
We could look at something like that. And then, and then if we end up doing one, we already have the design done for the other one. We could probably do something like that.
That sounds like a good plan.
Mike and Mike may not, I mean, kill me for saying that, but I think we can do that. We could, we could design two.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah.
That sounds good to me. And it would be the Third Street in Delaware is the, and the other one is the Second Street in Cherokee, east of Pullman, correct?
Yeah, we can design those two.
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, well, I both those to the design contract. And you should see the design contracts in the next thirty days.
Hopefully within the next two weeks.
Yeah, and that'll be for pavement management too.
Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, good lay down. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Well, that's a good point too because the Third and Delaware is right across from the development we're trying to have right there on that corner. I think it makes sense.
That's another incentive, right.
Okay, great.
Okay, city commission goal setting.
I may have to do a little bit more work on this one. I think we've had Commissioner Wilson weighed in when he saw the packet and indicated some of the times it didn't work from him. I think I've heard from Commissioner Bowder, Commissioner Leonhard. So I think I'm going to reach back out to the commissioners individually and get some more input. We're not under a huge time crunch for that, so I want to make sure we get a date that works for everybody, so.
Sounds good to me.
Come back to that.
That's good.
So that completes our five topics for today's study session. Commissioner Leonhard, do you have anything for the good of the commission here?
No, I do not, not this evening.
Commissioner Bowder?
It was a great game the other day.
Yeah, definitely.
I was so excited, I'm not going to the parade, but if any of you are going to the parade, be careful.
That's right. I would reinforce that and a great thing for the, for the city of Kansas City, the metro area, our fans all around and particularly here in the city of Leavenworth, so I know a lot of them will be going to the parade, so be careful because the weather's not supposed to be that great, but I don't think that's going to deter people from attending the parade, so. Great job, Chiefs, after fifty years, right? Coming back with the Super Bowl. That's fantastic. The only other thing I wanted to mention was that Commissioners Wilson, Bowder, and I attended on Saturday evening a Leavenworth Community Service Organization, CSO, Ninth Annual Black History Month Celebration and Dinner. The CSO is a, and I, I didn't realize this, probably Commissioner Bowder does, but it's a consortium of twenty-seven community service organizations that formed in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe under the belief that by bonding together, the impact on our community would be greater than the impact of just individual organizations